On our regular agenda tonight. Now if we all stand for pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing for the invocation tonight by Councilor Bowles.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Father, I pray tonight that you be with this council board for the next four years. I pray that you pour your Holy Spirit upon us to give us wisdom and guidance to direct this city and to go forward in the way you'd have to move us. Lord, I pray that you would always have your hand upon this board, upon the mayor, upon the leaders of the city and the directors, Lord, and always put you first, the city second, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chambliss.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Meeting is called to order. The character trait of a man is gratefulness, letting others know by words and actions how they have benefited my life, which is a beautiful, good character trait. Approval of the minutes, public here in the City Council meeting, October the sixteenth, two thousand and twelve. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Striplin. Have a second.
Second.
All in favors, signify by raising your hand that the minutes be approved. At this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Paul Beckman, he's a representative of the state of Alabama. Beckman, if you would like a point of privilege?
Yes, I would, young.
Go right ahead.
I think the word of the day is Quadrinium. I congratulate you all for the four years that you are going to serve. I am extending my hand out in my office, my office that I hold to y'all, to work together in the next two to four years in reference to this great endeavor. I enjoyed meeting all of your family. Some of y'all I did not get to meet yesterday, but it was a joyous occasion in reference to your swearing in. To be honest with you, it was probably one of the first ones I've ever been down here as far as the swearing ends, and I was good friends with David Whitstone when he was the old mayor, so apparently I was, it was, it was a great ceremony, and you all should be thankful and pat yourself on the back for a job well done. But the reason why I'm here today is to say that the state representative's position here that represents District eighty-eight's people extends their hands out, and I would like to work with you in the next years to come as far as some of the endeavors that you do. I have already extended my hand to Mr. Starnes here, and we have already talked as far as some various issues, and I know there's going to be a lot of issues coming before you in reference to funding, in reference to things that we can make a little bit better because we, that's what we're here for. We're here to make a better quality of life for everyone, and I'm here to extend that hand, and I want to say to you, congratulations, Mayor, congratulations, District one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. Thank you for a well jo, a job done. My hat is off to you, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Beckman, and I'm sure all of these ladies and gentlemen would take heed to what you said and look forward to getting as much money as they possibly can from. Comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda? Anyone in the audience would like to speak on any item on this night's agenda, on tonight's agenda? Seeing on one mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, sir, and I also want to thank Representative Beckman for coming down, and I want to try to keep this report short and sweet if I can, but first off, I want to say congratulations also for the job well done and for the event we had yesterday for the swearing, swearing in, but you know, ladies and gentlemen, as I mentioned yesterday, was the first day. Well, today is the second day for the rest of one thousand four hundred and fifty-nine days, and I will not continue repeating those numbers, but as we move, move on for this upcoming events that we have, we have our CHIPS program going on that will be going on Thursday through the fifteenth. It's a program that Kelly Cook has been pulling together with the Police Department, the Fire Department, and with Public Safety. It's a community holiday intervention with Public Safety. It's Thursday, November the fifteenth, from five thirty to seven thirty. Hope you guys can show up for that event. It's very, very informative, from a lot of do's and don'ts around our Christmas time as far as shopping, cooking, and just very informative, so I hope you can show up. Veterans Day, as we all know, will be celebrated November the twelfth this year, and it's eleven a.m., be over at our courthouse, be over at our courthouse, and lunch follows at twelve noon for the VFW, for our, for everybody sitting up here and also people out here in our, in our audience. And then also Military Appreciation Week is eleventh through the seventeenth, and we'll be celebrating that here in the City of Prattville. During that time, Chamber of Commerce on their website has, has a lot of special discounts that a lot of different businesses are putting, putting forth before the, for the different armed forces and our civilians, so please take advantage of that when you can. Also, let's see, on the fourteenth, we'll have a proclamation signed here. So the River Region, it's going to be Montgomery Mayor, Witumpka Millbrook, but anyway, the River Region Mayor is coming together to sign a Military Appreciation Proclamation. Hope you can join me here. It's going to be somewhere between nine fifteen and ten o'clock. They're going to have a big bus, buses pull up over here, and so if you can, please join me on that one. We'll have Lieutenant General Padoc there, and Major General Smith be showing up, but also I hope everybody has voted today. Pretty much the polls are almost closed, but whenever I went, had a very good turnout, it appears to be. One of the last closing things that we have going on is in the College Heights area of District Two. We're going to be having a community cleanup day there, and we're going to have a pretty good turnout of county, some county people coming in, some of our local citizens from District Two, and also some community service people showing up. So if you can, Saturday the tenth, eight to twelve on that one, be a good event to turn out for. But besides that, Mr. President, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. Anyone have any questions for the mayor?
Sit down.
Thank you. We have a report from Council and Special Committee, Counselors Striplin.
No, sir.
Counselor Brown.
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
No, sir.
Counselor Chambliss.
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes, sir, I'll be calling a fire committee meeting the next week or in two weeks. I will email everybody and put it, also give it to the city clerk beforehand, but I would like to everybody to know we will be having a fire committee meeting. Thank you.
Counselor Boone.
No, sir.
Thank you. As you all can see, and as Counselor Bowles is already calling a committee meeting, you all have your committee assignments before you, and I urge you to review your assignments and by all means, contact the department heads whenever you need to, to have a committee meeting.
May I have a point of privilege?
You may.
I'd like to bring a resolution from the floor to appoint Albert Striplin as Council President pro temp. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Albert Striplin is hereby appointed as City Council pro temp for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and sixteen Quadrinium. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Boone. Resolution coming from the floor is not on the agenda. In order for it to be considered tonight, we must suspend the rules and have unanimous consent. Call for suspension of the rules? Been moved by Counselor Bowles, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended. Be in discussion on this resolution. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. We have a President pro temp. Congratulations, Miss Striplin. We'll move on into our agenda items. The first item is a resolution to declare various weeds and lights to be a public nuisance in order near abatement per Title XI, Chapter sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended. Counselor Striplin, will you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes and other vermin, and may cause the further spread of weeds, and may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property, and may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas the City of Council of the City of Prattville declared in Resolution Book Page two twelve, two thousand and twelve, page one twenty-two, that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at various addresses in the City of Prattville constituted a public nuisance, and set a public hearing to discuss said nuisances, and whereas notices required by Section eleven dash sixty-seven dash sixty-two of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, was provided in the Prattville progress by certified mail and by signage on the subject property. And whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties listed in Resolution Book two thousand and twelve, page one twenty-two, adopted on October the second, two thousand and twelve, and determined that the public nuisance still exists. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville held that the required public hearing at six p.m. on November the sixth, two thousand and twelve, permitting the owners of same properties listed in Resolution Book two thousand and twelve, page one twenty-two, to present evidence, objections, and protests regarding the proposed removal of weeds. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville declares that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds on the properties continue to be a public nuisance. Four thirty-three Bedford Terrace, five oh one Daniel Drive, three three four Marlette Drive, four oh three New Moon Drive, four thirty-four Water Street. Be it further resolved that the mayor shall have the overgrown grass and weeds on the property listed above cut or removed using city forces or the private contractors listed in Attachment A. Any property owner shall have the right to have any weeds removed at his or her own expense, provided the removal is done prior to the commencement of work by employees or agents of the City of Prattville. The mayor shall keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of the overgrown grass and weeds, and report such costs to the City Council following their removal. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Counselor Striplin. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. There be in discussion on this resolution? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Resolution passed, seven oh. Next item is an ordinance to zone property located at U.S. Highway eighty-two at Constitution Avenue. This has been previously introduced before us. Do we have a motion on the floor? It's been previously introduced. Mr. McDowell, we just need to vote on it now. Okay. All in favor of this ordinance, signify by raising your hand. Any, again, so any abstentions?
Stand.
Clerk, shall we have two abstentions on that ordinance? Next item is a resolution to affix the cost of demolition of the dangerous and unsafe structure at ten eighty-five South Memorial Drive, Oakdale Trailer Park. Counselor Chambliss, will you read it, please?
Resolution to affix the cost of demolition of the dangerous and unsafe structure at ten eighty-five South Memorial Drive, Oakdale Trailer Park. Whereas Section eleven fifty-three B dash one through eleven fifty-three B dash sixteen of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, details process for the City of Prattville to declare certain unsafe structures a public nuisance and order their repair or demolition. And whereas Section eleven fifty-three B dash three, the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, requires that the city's order to repair or demolish an unsafe structure be sent to the owner of the property and those having legal interest in the property. And whereas Section eleven fifty-three B dash three and eleven fifty-three B dash four, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, requires the owners to repair or demolish the unsafe structure within forty-five days of being issued an order from the city, or to request a hearing before the City Council of the City of Prattville within thirty days of the order. And whereas Section eleven fifty-three B dash three, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, permits the City of Prattville to repair or demolish an unsafe structure if the owner fails to comply with the city order. And whereas Section eleven fifty-three B dash five, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, permits the City Council of the City of Prattville to adopt a resolution affixing the cost of demolition and establishing a lien against the property. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville finds that, number one, the Prattville Planning Department declared the residential structure at ten eighty-five South Memorial Drive to be a dilapidated structure on October eleventh, two thousand and one. Number two, the Prattville Planning Department issued an order to James Myron Smith, Jason Loomis, State of Alabama Department of Revenue, and Whitney Bank on October twentieth, two thousand and eleven, to have the property repaired or demolished within forty-five days of the notice. Number three, James Myron Smith, Jason Loomis, State of Alabama Department of Revenue, and Whitney Bank did not request a hearing before the City Council within thirty days of the notice, nor repair or demolish the structure within forty-five days of the notice. Number four, the City of Prattville Planning Department contracted for the demolition and clearance of the structure. Number five, the Prattville Planning Department has determined the total cost of demolition to be seven thousand three hundred ninety dollars and sixty-six cents, and presented such to the City Council of the City of Prattville, Attachments A-one and A-two. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the cost totaling seven thousand three hundred and ninety and sixty-six one hundreds for demolition of the structure located at ten eighty-five South Memorial Drive presented by the Prattville Planning Department is accurate and shall be established as a lien against the property located at ten eighty-five South Memorial Drive. The property is more particularly described as follows, see Attachment B. Be it further resolved that the city clerk shall record a certified copy of this resolution in the office of the Judge Probate of Attar County, adopted this sixth day of November two thousand and twelve. So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Chambliss. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Bowles. Will there be in discussion? No discussion, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Resolution passes. Next item is an ordinance to surplus four vehicles from the Police Department. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as followed, that the vehicles listed below are hereby declared surplus of Police Department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. A two thousand and two Chevrolet Tahoe, VIN number one G N E C thirteen Z twelve R thirty-two eighty-five fifteen. A two thousand dollars Durango, VIN number one B seven G L twenty-two Z six Y S six two one two four one. A two thousand Chevrolet Blazer, VIN number one G N C S thirteen W eight Y twenty-one oh three oh five six. And a two thousand and ten Hyundai Accent, VIN number K M eight C M three A C two A U one seven nine six eight nine. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicles on garlicdeal.com, and that the proceeds be deposited into the drug proceeds. I so move.
We have a motion by Counselor Bowles. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Striplin. This is an ordinance, in order for it to be considered tonight, the rules will need to be suspended, and we need unanimous consent. We have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Boone. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Striplin. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended on this ordinance. There be in discussion on the ordinance? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Ordinance passed, seven oh. Resolution number five, to authorize the hiring of five police officers for the Police Department at an annual cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the City of Prattville Police Department has a need to hire five police officers, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the annual cost of such employees will not exceed fifty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars per employee for salaries and benefits, and whereas this expenditure is a budgeted expense. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to two hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring five police officers, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year two thousand and thirteen budget line items, Police Department, salaries and wages, workman's compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring processes budgeted. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. Any discussion? Counselor Bowles.
Are these five officers, are they just replacing officers that we already had in budget?
Yes.
So it's all, it's budget neutral? Right, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Resolution passed, seven oh. Item number six, resolution to amend the budget and authorize the release of funds in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars for one vehicle from Larry Puckett Chevrolet for the Police Department. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas it is need, is a need for one vehicle for the City Prattville Police Department, and whereas the cost of vehicle is fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars, whereas the vehicle will be paid for with federal drug proceeds, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the budget surplus is here, hereby decreased by fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars, and the FY two thousand and thirteen budget line item Police Department slash capital outlay is hereby increased by fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the funds in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars for one vehicle are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Larry Puckett Chevrolet, and said funds are hereby approved to, and appropriated from the FY two thousand and thirteen budget line item Police Department slash capital outlay. I so move.
A motion by Counselor Bowles. Do we have a second? Seconded by Counselor Striplin. Any discussion on this item?
We have cash, we have cash in hand to pay for this? And is that the same for the rest of these? So we'll have to keep asking every time. Right, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Resolution passed, seven. Resolution number seven is to amend the budget and authorize the release of funds in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand. To amend the budget and authorize the release of funds in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars for one vehicle from community cars for the Police Department. Counselor Boone, will you read it, please?
Whereas there is a need for one vehicle for the City of Prattville Police Department, and whereas the cost of the vehicle is fourteen thousand dollars, and whereas the vehicle will be paid for with federal drug proceeds, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the budget surplus is hereby decreased by fourteen thousand dollars, and the FY two thousand and thirteen budget line item Police Department capital outlay is hereby increased by fourteen thousand dollars. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars for one vehicle are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to community cars, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the FY two thousand and thirteen budget line item Police Department slash capital outlay. Mr. President, I so move.
We have a motion from Counselor Boone. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Starnes. Be in discussion on this motion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Resolution passed. Resolution number eight, to amend the budget and authorize the release of funds in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand one hundred for one vehicle from Pig Enterprises for the Police Department. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas there is one need for one vehicle for the City of Prattville Police Department, and whereas the cost of the vehicle is thirteen thousand one hundred dollars, and whereas the vehicle will be paid with federal drug proceeds, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the budget surplus is hereby decreased by thirteen thousand one hundred dollars, and the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen budget line item Police Department capital outlay is hereby increased by thirteen thousand one hundred dollars. Be further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in the amount not to exceed thirteen thousand one hundred dollars for one vehicle, and hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Pig Enterprises, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated for the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen budget line item Police Department capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Bowles. Will be in a discussion? No discussion, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Resolution passed. Resolution number nine, to amend the budget and authorize the release of funds in an amount not to exceed eight thousand seven hundred dollars for one vehicle from Ben Atkinson Motors Incorporated for the Police Department. Counselor Chambliss, will you read it, please?
Whereas there is a need for one vehicle for the City of Prattville Police Department, and whereas the cost of the vehicle is eight thousand seven hundred dollars, and whereas the vehicle will be paid for with federal drug proceeds, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the budget surplus is hereby decreased by eight thousand seven hundred dollars, and the FY two thousand and thirteen budget line item Police Department capital outlay is hereby increased by eight thousand seven hundred dollars. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed eight thousand seven hundred dollars for one vehicle are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Ben Atkinson Motors Incorporated, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the FY two thousand and thirteen budget line item Police Department capital outlay, adopted this sixth day of November two thousand and twelve. So moved.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Seconded by Counselor Brown. Be in a discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Resolution passed. Resolution number ten, to authorize the mayor to negotiate terms and conditions to purchase additional city property for the wastewater department. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the wastewater department is in need of additional acreage to apply sludge, a byproduct of treating wastewater, and whereas the additional acreage will allow the wastewater department to run more efficiently and increase its productivity. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is authorized and empowered to negotiate terms and conditions for the purchase of additional city property for the wastewater department, and report back to the City Council the results of same. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a second? We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Boone. Will there be any discussions on this item? Counselor Bowles.
Okay, I'm just a little curious. If you do find land and you do negotiate it, does it come back, back before the council?
Yes, sir.
Certainly. Go ahead. Any further questions or discussions? All in favor of this item signify- All in favor of this item signify by raising your right hand. Resolution number 10 passes. Resolution number 11 is to appoint Jerry Simmons to the Board of Zoning Adjustments. Councilor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Whereas a vacancy occurs exceeds on the Board of Zoning Adjustments due to the term expiring of John Gillen on June 15, 2011, and whereas it is the desire of this Prattville City Council to fill that vacancy to ensure the continuity of the board operation, now therefore be it resolved that by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that Jerry Simmons is hereby appointed to be filled, to fill the vacancy effective immediately, and said term will expire June 15, 2014, or until his successor is duly and qualified and appointed. Thank you. I so move.
Motion by Councilor Bowles. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilor Brown. Being a discussion on this resolution? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Resolution number 11 passes. Resolution number 12, to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with BWS for an Indigo Guard self-managed support system and a Tier 2/Tier 3 support and management agreement with an initial setup fee of $3,000 in a monthly support fee estimated at $3,590 per month. Councilor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas there is a need for higher level information technology support for all departments in the City of Prattville, and whereas BWS offers a higher level information technology support with the Indigo Guard self-management support system and Tier 2/Tier 3 support and management agreement, and whereas the initial setup fee for said support system is $3,000, and whereas there will be an ongoing monthly charge for said support and management agreement estimates at $3,590 per month, and whereas both the initial setup fee and monthly charges are budgeted expense, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize the release of funds in an amount not to exceed $3,000 to be paid to BWS for the Indigo Guard self-managed support system initial setup fee, and funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2013 budget line item, information technology, professional services, and equipment maintenance. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize the release of funds to be paid to BWS to maintain the monthly support management agreement, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2013 budget line, information technology, professional services, and equipment maintenance. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor to enter into an agreement with BWS for an Indigo Guard self-managed support system and a Tier 2/Tier 3 support and management agreement. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Councilor Striplin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Brown. Will there be any discussion? Councilor Bowles.
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Mosley a question if he could come forward.
Mr. Mosley.
Mr. Mosley, I'd just like to know the process for, for the sake of the public of how we handled this. I know that it is, does not have to go through a bidding process, but I'd just like to know how we handled that.
Absolutely. We actually had two, three different people who submitted bids to us. We contacted them. We focused on businesses inside the city limits because we want to support the businesses inside the city limits. We do have a relationship with BWS. They've been helping us out tremendously for the last year or so, and even longer than that with higher level support, so we have that relationship with them. And what this, the Indigo Guard, Indigo Guard system part of it will actually allow us to do is anytime a person has an issue on their computer, they can right-click on their screen and submit a support ticket. That will allow us to track issues that we're having throughout the system and allow us to do some preventive maintenance and get some statistics on what the, what is going on in the department.
So our choice basically helped with continuity of service?
Correct.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Any other questions? All in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Resolution number 13 is set public hearing to discuss the franchise agreement with Nology of Montgomery. Councilor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Nology of Montgomery Incorporated owns, operates, and maintains a cable television system in the City of Prattville, Alabama pursuant to a cable television franchise ordinance, and whereas Nology is in the process of merging with WOW Internet Cable and Phone, and whereas on October 2, 2012, the City Council adopted Resolution Book 2012, page 124, which found the grantee to be in violation of the franchise and city code for failure to comply with Section 11 of the franchise and Section 58-62 of the city code by failing to remit the city unpaid franchise fees, associated interest and cost of the desk review in a sum up to $73,536.78100. Whereas such resolution was forwarded to Nology of Montgomery, Inc., and such constituted written notice of, grantee's written notice of violation, and whereas this notice commenced a 30-day period for which the grantee may correct the franchise violation, but such has not been corrected. And whereas the city hereby reserves the right to consider whether grantee's failure to remit past due franchise fees set forth in the desk review further constitutes a violation of the terms of the transfer resolution, rendering the city approval of the merger with WOW, Knoll, and Void. And whereas the city further reserves the right to pursue and all, any and all, legal and equitable remedies that may be available under the franchise, city code, and applicable law, and whereas Section 2D of the franchise and Section 58-63D of the city code requires that the city hold a public hearing to determine whether the franchise should be revoked. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that a public hearing is hereby set for the fourth day of December 2012 at 6:00 PM to determine whether the franchise should be revoked or what other remedies may be available to the city. Mr. President, I so move.
Have a motion by Councilor Bowles. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Striplin. Being a discussion on this item? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Resolution passed. This exhausts our agenda for the night. At this time, if there is anyone in the audience that would like to make comments on any other items, please come forward, state your name, address for the clerk.
My name is Fredy Norango. I live on 204 Brookhaven Drive, and I wanted to present something to the council. I got some sketches here I would like to give to each one of you, so. I gave some to the officer in case, in case the mayor or the council approves to give some to the public, but it's something very simple. The City of Prattville is a great city, and I really enjoy living here. As an engineer, I've been in different, in other cities. This city has been great, and I really appreciate the job that the councilmen, councilmen do and the mayor. There's one thing I noticed that is the lack of recreation in some areas, you know. I've been, I've been amazed that this city has no community center with basketball, you know. For some reason, there's not basketball, indoor basketball at all. Well, these are hard times, and so it'll be hard to be all one of those, and probably we don't have the federal aid that there was at one time, which some cities took advantage of, but I am, I still would like to do something for certain areas of the city because very few goals, even outdoor courts that are in the city, you know, very few, and not in the areas I go to, you know. There are some good neighborhoods that don't have anything like that. There is a place in Newton Park where we could place one of these, and it's a very simple solution. I've been told that there is a long-term plan for Newton Park, but I would like to do something in, at this time, you know, that could work even with a long-term solution later. And it's just to, there are five tennis courts in this park, and the reason I'm bringing this solution is because so simple, it's so economical, and there, the surface is already there, and there's five basket, five tennis courts. I would like to use half of one of those for a portable basketball goal. That way you could still have your tennis tournaments when needed, and basically all we're doing is placing a, we're placing a portable goal on one of the courts, right near the light. There's an existing light there, there's an entrance already. I'm suggesting that this be done on the opposite side of the playground, so that way people don't interfere, those people that come with children and play tennis, and sometimes they are watching softball, whatever. I would say let's do it on this, on the corner, near the corner where the two streets meet, you know. I would like to ask the council to please consider this as a whole, you know, it's a very, and if, if the city struggles that much, I'm even willing to donate the goal myself, you know, just as long as the city allows to use this surface, and it just, as you can see, it's something that's very doable, and I just would like to have a basketball goal for outdoor recreation on that one part of the, of Newton Park. Anybody has any questions?
Any council member have any questions? Councilor Bowles.
We, we met out there together and looked at it. I've taken it to the old Leisure Service Committee. There's a new Leisure Service Committee, which will, they'll be getting in contact with you hopefully, but I do know that after looking at it and researching it, it's just not going to work on those tennis courts. We have too many kids that are using that nonstop, and if anything, the city's got to expand the tennis courts also because we don't have enough of them. Right now, the, the tennis league is boomed, and so looking at it, because it's in my district is the reason I've sort of stuck my nose in it not being on that board. I would like to see if in the near future, there's a way to add a court out there, but it wouldn't be able to go on those tennis courts. And that's something I'm going to ask the Leisure Service Committee to look into because the park's in my district, and I would love to see that, but right now I would not be able to support taking off, you know, taking that goal in there because the, the surface is already getting really worn down, and we don't have the money to replace the surface of that court.
With due respect, I, I run every day. I run by that area every day. They, most times there's two courts being used and sometimes three. So that's why I'm saying is it is a portable goal, which means that even when you have a tournament, which is the only time that they use all five courts, that's the only time. When you use a half court, you're not going to wear down the surface. I'm an engineer myself, I can tell you that it's not going to be that much abuse on that surface. Many cities have done the same thing, and, and really it is a doable solution. I don't know why the recreation or the leisure committee is, is so opposed to it, you know, but I really, I promise you that I go by there every day, and I invite you to do the same, that all the goals are not occupied every time. They are not, and that's why this is a portable goal, and it can be moved whenever there are tournaments. And believe me, there are five courts, there are tennis courts, and I'm asking for basketball, one half of a court versus you still got the other four left. I believe this is a workable solution. I really believe so.
What about right behind the tennis courts? That little parking lot, there's a nice flat area if we could raise the money and put a half court back there behind it, and then everybody has their courts and we're not approaching on one that's already been there, and open up a court over there?
That's fine. I, I know that that means more expense to the city, you know, but if that is done, it's fine. I mean, just as long as it's in that park, I think it'd be great. I just don't know if the city is willing to spend on paving.
I'll get with the, the person that's over Leisure Services again, and we'll walk out there and look at it and start trying to get a plan together, okay?
Okay, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions for the gentleman before he leaves, sir? Another question? You may have your seat, sir, then. Councilor Bowles, I presume the gentleman is in your district?
Well, I think so. Okay. He's in the district.
Okay, well, what we will do, sir, along with your counselor and the newly formed Leisure Services Committee, they will get together and come up with some type of strategy to look into what can be done there to suffice or to make it better for everyone. Thank you for coming. Anyone else like to address the council? Come forward, state your name, please.
My name is John DeVoe, 510 Vendale Road, and I'd like to add to what the gentleman stated about a basketball goal that I'd like to request that the city, while also looking at that and the Leisure Services Committee, looking at the, adding a portable basketball court or court, basketball court to the park at Newton Park, that they also include in those considerations, something similar for Pratt Park and something similar for Kiwanis Park, and that's, that's my suggestion, that those two parks also be included at the same time in those deliberations.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. DeVoe? Thank you, sir, for coming. Leisure Services, I'm sure have heard all of the acknowledgements from the parties coming forward, and we thank you all for coming forward. Anyone else like to address the council? Mr. Mayor, do you have a ready report?
Yes, sir. Just one other little friendly reminder is it's Sunday, November the 18th. Performing Creative Arts at the Scott House will have a holiday open house inside at the gallery, and so if you could participate in that, it'd be, will appreciate it, and it might even enlighten you on how talented some of the artists are around this area. But then also, since our committees have been formed, been formed, I would ask that as soon as possible Leisure Services meet to, to discuss movement in, with the splash pad, and then also vehicle maintenance to meet, because also under that committee, it is also over city buildings, and I would like to discuss the city's plans with the, the building up on top of Martin Luther King, also known as the Gurney Building, the glory of the plant. But if that can be done as soon as possible, it would be very much appreciated.
Thank you. Is that all, Mayor? Councilor Striplin?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Brown?
We will be calling a Streets Committee meeting, so I'll get with everybody on the Streets Committee, and we'll find a good time.
Thank you. Councilor Sterns?
None.
Councilor Chambers?
No, sir.
Councilor Bowles?
No, sir.
Councilor Bowles?
No, sir.
Let me just make this announcement. The mayor has already talked about college high. Let me just add, I want to invite anyone that would like to come out to the College High cleanup this Saturday from 8 to 12, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, any organization, any individuals, they're wanting to improve their community, and we're trying to help them as a city to improve it as much as possible. With that being said, next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 20th, 2012, at 6:00 PM. Thank each of you all for coming. Thank the city employees and all of the council people and the mayor for what you do. If nothing else, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Meeting is...